All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
At Pledge of Allegiance, two flag of the United States of America and to Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We have an urgent matter that we need to discuss later on in the agenda that hasn't been put on the agenda yet, so I'm looking to see if I can get a motion to amend the agenda under the Director of Operations to add potential distribution of Phil.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we're open for public comment on agenda items only. Please just step up to the microphone. Make sure you state your name and your residence.
Mary Ann Davies, Doylestown Township Residence. I'm here to give a couple of comments regarding the Doylestown Township ordinance regarding the bag, plastic bag ban. While I commend you all for wanting to be good stewards of the environment, I as well and my family are as well. However, I feel that you can, it's better to ask the townships, the township residents to voluntarily do something like that and maybe have a program, be different, be innovative about an incentive program rather than something as punitive as this. So I believe in incentive and voluntary actions rather than something that's punitive, especially reading this ordinance, it really falls on the businesses. In particular, the business mix of Doylestown Township is mostly a lot of smaller and medium retailers as well as a grocer. It really is an inconvenience and I have, oh, excuse me, just a moment. I was at the Doylestown Borough meeting when they introduced the ordinance in the beginning, and it included a 15 cent charge, a mandatory charge that retailers were going to be required to impose on their customers. At that meeting, an overwhelming number of small retailers in Doylestown Borough came to the meeting and opposed that charge. Again, it's kind of a punitive thing rather than innovate, you know, voluntary advocacy. This is a great inconvenience because a lot of the small businesses, as they said in the Doylestown Borough, pre-order their bags. It's part of the shopping experience at a boutique that already has their imprinted, for the most part, paper bags. And under your ordinance, I believe that bags like this from the wine shop would be outlawed. Bags like this with a handle would be outlawed. Bags like this would be outlawed. And we would get a very slim, thin paper bag, which by the way, honestly, the last time I went to CVS, I had to buy, you know, a few items, the bag broke just as I was putting it in the car. And had I not had a medical appointment within 20 minutes of that, I would have gone back in the store with all the goods that fell on the floor and the broken bag. So I just want you to keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Just a reminder, we have two minutes on our public comment. Can you state your name and your residence?
Sure. Hi, good evening. My name is Joanne Bear. I live in Warrington Township. However, I'm a small business owner here in Doylestown, and I'm here to speak on behalf of this, of the bag ordinance that I believe is on the agenda for this evening. And I'm actually pretty concerned because as a small business owner, literally across the street in Barn Plaza, I had no idea that this was even on the table until most recently. And I was told that we were contacted and we were not contacted. And I went through all of the businesses in our shopping center, again, I'm in Barn Plaza, and none of them have been contacted or made aware of this ordinance even being on the table or up for discussion. On behalf of the small businesses, putting an ordinance like this in play does affect our business. We are here in the community thriving and giving jobs to moms, grandmothers, and students. I am in a difficult economy as we are all experiencing with this rate of inflation. Business is suffering, as you can see with the construction in the center, as with the inflation, and I'm still keeping my people employed because I'm a good employer and I'm a good steward of the community. I don't feel that you as a Board of Supervisors are taking us small business owners and protecting us the way I'm protecting my employees with their jobs by taking this ordinance and saying, you know what, you need to start charging your customers for if they don't bring a bag to your store. It is part of their experience when they come to my store. I give them a beautifully packaged item for their wonderful things and for their services, and they leave with a feel-good feeling, and I'm also giving them a paper bag. So I feel like I am being protective and concerning of the environment. But I would like to be more of a partner with the township in making decisions like this to really understand how it affects us. I don't want to charge my customers, even if it is 10 or 15 cents. It is not something that they want when they come to my business, and it's not something I want to instill on them. And I'd like to have a voice in that, and I'd like to know that you respect me as a business owner in this community and ask me for my opinion prior to just making this decision. So please hold off on this vote tonight and reach out to your fellow, to your small business owners and really understand the financial impact that this is going to have on us. Because it may not seem like a lot to you, but as the business owner, it is.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify, and may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is your objection to the ordinance, the up-charge of the 15 cents?
Yes.
But other than that, you're okay with it? Generally speaking?
Generally speaking, yeah.
Thank you.
But I'd like to have a sit-down and actually go through line by line, if that's an option.
Not likely, but I'm being honest with you.
But yes, that is.
Thank you.
We shouldn't be charging anyone for their bags.
Can I clarify, the bags that we saw, are those all, would they all be banned, everything that Ms. Davies showed, anything with a handle?
I'm seeing Dr. Baldassari shaking, you said, no.
Can you come up? I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to understand because...
Jim Baldassari on the Doylestown EAC. I have a brief presentation later, but the paper bags that were shown would not be banned. Plastic bags would be banned, but there would be, what we're proposing is a fee for the paper bags unless someone brought a reusable bag. So the paper handled bags would not be banned. Well, that's, we can discuss that, I understand.
So at this point, instead of having a conversation back and forth, I'm taking down your comments, and when the presentation happens later on in the agenda, I'll be asking those questions of Jim so that we can keep this meeting moving forward. Former Supervisor Rick Gaver approaching the podium. Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rick Gaver. I am a resident of this wonderful township, and I'm here to take up for the cause of the single-use plastic bag. You stated that the purpose of the single-use plastic bag ordinance was to, quote, "to reduce the use of single plastic bags by retail establishments. Doing so will result in an increase in the cost to the residents of the township and when the retailer passes that cost on to the resident." To me, this is just a good-feel ordinance. You will feel good and pump your chest and say, what a good thing I did tonight. The ordinance mentions in Section 2, subsection 2A, that the single-use plastic bags are blocking storm drains. I believe that this is a minor problem. I never thought that I would spend my time spending, checking out storm drains, but I did. The first drain that I checked out, there were three water bottles, but no plastic bags. The second drain had a large red Dixie plastic cup on top, but no plastic bags. And the third drain had sticks and grass clippings, but no plastic bags. Based upon the ordinance's logic of keeping the storm drains clean, we should be banning water bottles, plastic containers, and even trees and grass. Thirty to 40 years ago, we started the recycling program to do away with paper bags and to save trees. And now we are going backwards, doing away with plastic and killing more trees. I take exception to the misnomer "single-use" plastic bags. I for one use these bags multiple times. One as a liner in the trash basket, two as a liner in my compost bucket, and how many residents have you seen walking their dogs and carrying a plastic bag? As I would like to say, a multiple-use bag. It is mentioned in Section 2, under Finding, subsection 2C, "Single-use plastic bags do not readily decompose." I submit that this may be true of these bags, that they don't decompose, but it will take at least forever for the reusable bags made of polyurethane to decompose. In Section 4, under Requirements...
Excuse me. I just want, I want to let you know that the time is up, but I'll allow for a little bit if you're wrapping up.
What's that?
Your two minutes is up, but I'll allow for you to finish up your thoughts.
I'm sorry, I'm hard to hear it.
Your two minutes?
Don't use the microphone.
Your two minutes is up, but I'll let you wrap up.
Oh, I thought I had three.
You have two.
I'll leave you with this thought. If you ban plastic bags, I would hope the township would set the precedence and remove the plastic bags that they have in the dog park or in the parks, because these are definitely single-use bags.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't know this was going to be on the agenda tonight. My name is Bill Laird, Bunker Hollow Road, Doylestown. We have a home in North Myrtle Beach. Two years ago, the city of North Myrtle Beach instituted what we're trying to do here. What they did, they had a fundraiser, and the city of North Myrtle Beach distributed reusable bags that said, "Compliments to the city of North Myrtle Beach." The funds came from the businesses in the city of North Myrtle Beach, and as of today, it is still working successfully. I ask, if you want me to, I can do more research and report back to you, but I just want to give you this idea.
It's a wonderful idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Hi, Donna Shannon, formerly Doylestown, now New Britain, well, Chalfont, and I'm happy about that because the giant that I will now live by is not banning bags. This gentleman stole my thunder when he talked about the dog. You know, I reuse my bags. I was raised conservative. You can serve our natural resources, and I'd like to know how you pick up dog poop with this, because I don't, I don't really think it's possible. There are so many things. I've been to New Jersey. I think the whole state bans bags, plastic bags. I think bags in general. You have to pay for your bags. So when I went to New Jersey for a dance competition twice and had to get food, I had to make multiple trips to and from my car. So it's very unfriendly there, very, very unfriendly. I don't want Doylestown to be an unfriendly place. It's not kind, and we really should consider this. And yes, this was banned because we were saving trees. Now we're bringing this back, because what was good is bad, and now as bad is good, and we can't keep up. I just want a bag that I can pick up my dog poop with, because I walk my dog a lot. He's big, poops a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Hi. I know I'm on the agenda. My mom just got hospitalized, so I have to go soon. Can you hear me? Okay, so I'm excited to know what is happening, moving forward with this meeting with Warrington, because apparently they're finally on board.
I'm sorry, I know a lot of us know you, but for the record, can I have your name and your address?
Oh, Heather Schroeder, 1480 Turk. So I'm very excited to know that we're moving forward, but I do want to address a few things super quick. So I know the officers are not allowed to use speed radars to capture speed, so the neighbors and I purchase a speed gun. And the speeding, within half an hour at night, everybody was in the 50s. Our speed limit is 35. I know that we're going to address it, but I almost feel that as a resident, I don't know that it should be my responsibility to be doing all of this, you know? I feel that we brought safety issues up, and it should be noted and it should be addressed. So 55 is just way too much. I got somebody at 53 today. The other thing, because the truck signs that were up, were illegally up, they've been taken down, and it has literally increased Mack trucks tenfold. I mean, I'm talking by my feet. I took, I would love to be able to show you video of what is actually happening. Like, I was standing behind my fence today, a truck flies by literally within six inches of my toes. So I really think if I could show you video at some point, that we could quickly get the truck signs back up and ban the trucks. So anyway, I have to go to the hospital.
I'm sorry.
So I need you guys, I really need your help. We need your help, okay?
So I think you know, you know that we are, we're going to have a discussion about two weeks.
Yeah, June 3rd.
Yeah, so it's gonna, that'll bring together all the parties, because I think that's part of the complication. So we will be meeting with them, so...
And Warrington will be there, like, the staff?
I believe, I believe. Warrington and their team will be invited to the meeting.
Okay.
We've been in contact with them, and we confirmed the date with them.
What if they don't come?
If they don't come, I think that would be on them.
So they haven't been invited, they haven't been invited yet, or they have?
They, we confirmed the date with their chairman and their staff, and I'm hoping they'll come.
Okay, so that Mike will be there, the chairperson, we think? You invited him?
Well, he will be invited directly. He will get an invitation along with the other folks.
Okay.
And we'll just have to wait and see who's available to show up.
Okay, and will there ever be a time, even though we're having that meeting, that I can present to you videos of what occurs?
Why don't you wait till the meeting and see if you can do it then?
Okay. Are you, are you all going to be there?
I'm not, but I can be there.
You will?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Will you be there, Chief?
One of our representatives will be.
Okay. All right, sorry.
Hope your mom is okay.
That's okay, yeah.
Got to go.
I think, I can say, I think our chair is very committed to safety, right, Jen? And that we want to do what's right, so we're going to go through the process, okay?
Got to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Unintended.
On agenda items, I'm sorry, yes.
I'm Paul Weinstein, 117 Ridgeville Lane in Doylestown Township. I'm just here to support the plastic bag, single-use plastic bag ordinance. I think it's a great idea. I've been using reusable bags myself for 40 years. It just takes remembering. And we have a crisis on this planet of single-use plastics contaminating our environment. We have a crisis with global warming. Producing plastics increases global warming, so I think our township can do its small part, and I applaud the supervisors for drafting the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up? Yeah? Just state your name and your address.
Denise Glick, Ferry Road, Doylestown Township. Thank you. Thank you so much. I can't even believe what I've heard tonight. Okay. Plastic bags have been a problem for a long time, maybe 50 years, maybe longer since they were invented. This is my reason. This is, this is a great little bag. They're everywhere.
Denise, can you please make sure you speak into the mic?
Thank you, sorry. Reusable bags are so easy. Just get used to it and do the world a favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up?
I'm just going to say something real quick.
Oh, sure.
I just want to mention to all the speakers, you know, you can come up. You don't need to give your address. You only need to indicate whether or not you are a resident. You don't need to give your street address. You just need to say whether you're a resident of Doylestown or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Shepherd, resident of Doylestown. I'm against the, this plastic bag proposal. Personally, I'm against it because there's a lot of talented people up here. One of your talents is not running a retail business. I think we should let the business of running retail businesses to those who know how to do it, just like those people who own those businesses haven't run against all you because they don't know how to do what you do. But I'm not naive. I'm in a room full of politicians. You don't care about that. So here's what you do care about: getting your constituents sick. We are not the first place that's proposed this ban. Plastic bags, I work a lot with seniors. Plastic bags have reduced the amount of infection from food poisoning to almost zero levels. In all places that have instituted these bans, whether it be going to paper or a reusable bag, the rate of food poisoning skyrockets. Those are your constituents' kids who will be getting sick, and for seniors with a weakened immune system, we're talking about week-long, like, stays in hospitals that last for weeks or months. It all depends, like, invariably that's the way it goes. This is step one, whether it be the market or another vote by you all, eventually it's how they're going to, it's going to go to that reusable bag. Either the businesses can't afford to do it, so they just will offer them, like Wawa has in many counties in PA, and food poisoning has skyrocketed as a result. And at the end of the day, your constituents, who are they going to blame for that? You all. Who are they going to vote for? The people who got them sick? The people who got their kids sick? Or the people who didn't want that to happen? And hopefully, that's the argument that politicians will like. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on agenda items? All right, well, thank you, everyone, for your comments. The announcements. The next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. The Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors and Finance Committee will hold a budget session that same day on Tuesday, the June 18th, at 5:00 PM. Doylestown Township Municipal Building will be closed for Memorial Day on Monday, May 27th. Doylestown Township Veterans Advisory Committee will participate with a township truck and banners in the Memorial Day Parade in Doylestown Borough on Memorial Day. It's going to be an amazing event. Haven't missed it in years, so... The Local Traffic Advisory Committee will hold a Turk Road Traffic Calming Kickoff Meeting on June 3rd, as we spoke about earlier this evening, at 7:00 PM at the Doylestown Township Municipal Building. Thompson Performing Arts Series at CNN Amphitheater in Central Park kicks off with Big Romeo on Wednesday, June 5th. The series will continue for 12 weeks, bringing music to Central Park throughout the summer. Sign up for e-news at DoylestownPA.org for lineup of weekly performances and parking information. I believe we have a video on that.
While you're doing that, can I add something to the June 5th announcement?
Sure.
The Penn Community, a local bank, has sponsored the Special Olympics of Bucks County Bocce Ball Court, and that dedication is happening on the same day at 2:00, and everyone is invited. Penn Community is using that as a day of service. So it's 2:00, June 5th, Central Park, and I understand that the Special Olympics team will be teaching bocce ball, and if it's raining, then there are lots of events, activities inside.
All right, do we have the video back there? I saw an arm waving. I don't understand that signal. There we go.
Hey there. My name's Chad Clem, and I'm a volunteer on the Doylestown Township Environmental Advisory Council. On behalf of the EAC, I invite you to join us in a celebration of our beautiful gardens this summer on Saturday, June 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This event will recognize the 10th anniversary of our multi-award-winning native plant demonstration garden. We'll also be acknowledging the first-year anniversary of our newly-installed Lenape Recognition Garden. The Midsummer Garden Party will feature live music, eco-friendly workshops, guided tours of the native gardens, and of course, native plants. Mark your calendars and join us for a fun day of nature, education, and community spirit.
Oh, very nice.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you. So, let's see, where are we? Oh, join, so this video was to join the celebration of the 10th anniversary of the native plant garden in Central Park. Again, the event will be held on Saturday, June 22nd, between 10 and 1...
Doylestown Township, recent... Another...
That is where we are.
Parking will be available at Coats Elementary School, so if you're going to come, that's a great place to park for that day. National Night Out is going to be Tuesday, August 6th, 2024, between 4:00 and 8:00 PM at Central Park. It's a wonderful free community event. Get to meet the police, get to see all the cool equipment. It's just a fantastic event, and we've been, and free hot dogs, thank you. And like we said before with the Thompson Performing Arts Series, we have the e-news that you can sign up for. It comes out every Friday at 4:00 PM if you sign up at DoylestownPA.org. They're really helpful email, emails that come out. They're brief, but they're very informative, so they won't junk up your inbox, but they are very helpful. All right, with that, we have the budget work session on April 2nd, 2024 minutes approval.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the minutes for the regular meeting on April 2nd?
I offer an amendment that the minutes include the members who are in attendance, the board members who are in attendance or not in attendance. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I'm sorry. I ask that the minutes be amended to reflect those, those of the board members who were in attendance at that meeting.
Thank you.
Sorry, couldn't hear.
All right, with that amendment...
Yeah, I have one more comment I'd like to amend. I'd like it to be noted that during the minute approval, Supervisor Santa Cecilia asked for the minutes to reflect her statement on the Southeastern Road Connector Trail. It said only 5% of the residents use the trails, and I'm not really sure...
That's bikers, bikers, not, the actual people who bike are 5%.
Right, but you, the comment was that 5% of the residents use the trails, and to my knowledge, there's no study that's been undertaken to determine the percentage of residents that use the trails.
There was a study. I can ask Stephanie to give it to you.
So the minutes are reflecting what was spoken, not what's true.
Yeah, right, if I can jump in here. The amendment that Supervisor Lyons is offering is a correct amendment, something that should be reflected. The amendment that's being discussed right now is, if it was not discussed at the last meeting, we wouldn't amend the minutes. Your comments will simply show up in next month's, next month's.
And actually, Mr. Kelso's here. There was, Judy, before you were on the board, a report that came through, and when it talked about trails specifically, it said only 5% of are bikers who use those trails, so maybe we can get you a copy of that.
Yeah, well, in fact, I queried Mr. Kelso and the Bike Height Committee and the administration for those numbers, because although I understand that I cannot correct that at this point, it still poorly reflects on the uses of our trails, and it's not an accurate number from any study that I've been given information to.
Okay.
So I'd love to see that study or where that information is found from. Otherwise, it does look like a fact in the meeting minutes, when I'd like it noted that there is no study that's quoted.
There were studies, we can, I think they were retired, but we can talk about it offline.
Yeah. This is more supervisor comments than...
Your comment will be noted, but with the amendments given by Vice Chair Lyons, I believe that's the only adjustment to the minutes, unless there's any other additional adjustments. No? Okay, do you have a motion?
Move for the approval with that amendment.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Correspondence, we receive correspondence, multiple correspondence in our packets. One is related to the puppy mill ordinance that another municipality had done. Another was related to the 202 Parkway bike lanes. Judy, I think there was... done. Another was related to the 202 Parkway bike lanes. Judy, I, I think there were, there was some discussion that wanted to be, you wanted to have about.
Yes.
Bike lanes?
I think, I think it's clear from this memo that we can support this.
Well, I think that there was a bike and hike meeting, so if we'd like to hear what the thoughts were.
Yeah, as liaison, they asked me to read a paragraph. So.
Are we doing this now? Are we doing it during Supervisor comments?
Correspondence.
This is during correspondence as it relates to the email, because we're gonna require some consensus on this. Okay.
So this is Bike-Hike Committee's recommendation regarding the PennDOT 202 Parkway request. Doylestown Township's Bike-Hike Committee commends PennDOT's expressed concern for the safety of bicyclists on the 202 Parkway. We encourage PennDOT to bolster safety mechanisms for the dedicated, separate Bike-Hike Trail, including effective and maintained barriers for car traffic in problem areas, along with ensuring the capacity of the trail is adequate for safe use by cyclists and pedestrians. This focus helps strengthen PennDOT's options for alternatives to on-road cycling. The Bike-Hike Committee asks for additional time for continued discussion on specific solutions in lieu of the removal of the cycling insignia on the roadway.
Can, can I just clarify, Judy? So the concern is on the 202 Parkway, there's some bike trails that are literally right on the Parkway, and then there's also the paths.
Correct.
Correct. And PennDOT has come to us and said they'd like to remove them.
Right.
But the Bike and Hike Committee is saying they'd like an option to maybe see if there's a way to still keep them. Is that correct?
Hmm, I think that, no, that's, it's, it's more that they were just got notice of it and discussed it at 8:00 AM this morning, and they asked for additional time from this board in order to just have, just to look at all their options before they weigh in on the matter completely.
Does that require a motion? I'll put in a.
Is there, is there a timeline from PennDOT in that, Jen? Was there a timeline in that letter?
I believe Richard was at the Bike-Hike meeting.
Richard was at, yes, he was at the meeting.
The Director of Transportation in the Planning Commission.
Right, and he said that it wasn't, it wasn't urgent, that it had to be decided in.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
There, there's been discussion in the Bike and Hike for quite some time, not about these on-road trails, but about, about the safety of the specific trail, because that fence isn't stopping anyone. And what, what is the appropriate amount of safety to ask PennDOT to put in there, and something that will work long-term and not constantly look like it's falling apart, as that fence currently does?
Wait, I think it's two different things. You're talking about the trail that's next to the Parkway.
Correct, the trail versus the on-road, the on-road. I say the on-road trail versus the dedicated trail. The, the on-road trail is what, the discussion is removing that, I think most people are in favor of that from what Judy said, but it's also, can we increase, while we're doing that, can we also increase the safety of the dedicated trail?
Yeah, just, just to say, it's not, not a trail, it's a bike lane, just to make sure that.
Yeah, so I'm getting, that's why I was asking, to clarify.
Okay. So, so the consensus, we can push this to next meeting, right, without any formal, we don't have table anything, okay?
Thank you.
In addition, there was correspondence related to the TASSA Grant Award. Is there anything that we need to discuss on that?
Just informational that we received another $700,000 that we actually hadn't even applied for, for the Southeastern Road, so it is now 100% fully funded for construction.
Good job.
Fabulous.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have the report, solicitor report.
No, no report this evening.
Okay, Township Engineer?
No report this evening.
Chief?
Yes, I do. Several months ago, the Police Department recognized a, a group of officers for a couple of different incidents over a two-month period, and an individual officer for a, a single incident. We often, we go a long time without actually recognizing these officers and the amount of work that they actually put in. But just last night, or yesterday afternoon during the heat, we had a, it came out as a suspicious person complaint around 12:30 in the afternoon that escalated to either a mental health or medical emergency complaint. And once again, we had multiple agencies coming into Doylestown Township to assist us. We had the Bucks County Sheriff's this time, Bucks County Park Rangers, New Britton Township, and again, Central Bucks Regional. And you can see where, where this one occurred up along the Ferry Road Corridor. So it's kind of like, we have this great partnership with a lot of these agencies, and it's great to see the level of cooperation and the things that go. One other thing I'd like to mention, I don't know if you remember back in August, the Central Bucks Police Department received a, through a partnership with the Police Foundation, the Central Bucks Police Foundation, and Smith Marine, they had, came up with a Can-Am off-road side-by-side. That was quickly utilized yesterday afternoon to go out into the fields and cross rivers and, not rivers, streams, and located an individual that was in a medical emergency through heat stroke and heat this. So the partnerships is just, I, I just want to emphasize, not any individual, just the level of cooperation that we have in the Central Bucks community, and that's the things that we all need to come together and recognize, this community and what we all do. So I just want to recognize, you know, this, those four agencies, along with our officers that were there, you know, the Central Bucks Police Foundation, you know, Smith Marine, who has a partnership in this, who, you know, probably a very large financial thing, donating this. But again, to the officers, thank you for your assistance yesterday. I do not have all their specific names. I don't know that this will raise to the level of a commendation or anything, but they, they need recognition.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, Director of Operations?
Okay, a few items that I have. First one is the Community Recreation Center Park Improvements, SKEPTAN Change Order Number Three. As part of the contract, SKEPTAN Construction was supposed to supply two items under their contract. One was for the kitchen vent hood, which, and the second one was the building dedication plaque. Through the process, we basically were discussing that this item for the kitchen vent hood would be supplied to the, by the township to the contractor to install, as well as what we did with this building was, we supplied, procured and supplied the dedication plaques for this building. We're gonna do the same thing for the Community Recreation Center, so we're receiving a credit back from the contractor for it, totaling $9,700. This is not 100%, you know, back into the, to the bucket, because we'll still need to find a vent hood to supply to them as well as procure the plaques, but we could probably do it cheaper than, than that amount. So I'm asking the Board's approval of SKEPTAN Construction Change Order Number Three, please, for a credit of $9,700.
I'm sorry.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Keep those negative change orders coming.
Okay, second item is the 2024 culvert repair project. So annually, we do our structure repairs inspections. Penone does that as part of their services, and they identify repairs that need to be made. We basically identified two culverts that are in need of repair. One is a bridge at Edison Road, at the intersection with Edison and Quarry. The, another box culvert is over on Sauerman Road between North, basically Eastern Road and Turk Road. So we put that out to bid additionally, included in that bid was an alternate for the Bike-Hike Trail pipe repairs, which is behind the, in the, on the Doylestown Lee Trail, behind the Doylestown Executive Quarters. That is in need of repair, so we put that all together. We received the bids, they were open on May 15th. We have three bids, basically upon review by Penone, and it's their recommendation and discussion, is that we award basically the base bid, which is the two culvert repairs, to, to G and B Construction Group for a total of $263,023. The alternate will, we're recommending that that be thrown out or not awarded, and that it be rebid, because the, the amount was too high for our budget right now. I'm asking for the Board's approval of G and B Construction Group's proposal or bid.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, my final item, which is the addendum or amendment to the, the agenda. We are, as, as the Board may know, but not everybody else is, we're doing the Community Recreation Center project, and that's moving forward. And you can see what's going on with removing dirt and trying to carve out for the building pad and for the, the courts. We have a lot of extra dirt, okay? We have topsoil and we have basically fill material. As part of the Shady Retreat Safe Roots of School Project, we have need of fill dirt. So there was discussion amongst us that take the fill from one site, give it to one contractor to the other, and they can use it. With that, the reason why I'm asking for this addition is because we're trying to start to move that dirt this week. We are working with PennDOT to obtain their approvals, because it's actually gonna be part of the PennDOT Safe Roots of School Project. So I'm asking the Board to basically allow, it's in, it's called a borrow and/or waste agreement. Waste is another term for fill, okay? So don't think about it as anything bad, but I'm asking the Board that we would just execute this agreement between the Township and Reno Construction, so that they, we're basically allowing them to take this fill material from this site and take it to the, the Bike and Hike. If for some reason we can't move this material, I will be coming back and asking the Board for a waiver of one of our ordinances, I guess, Stephanie, if that's correct term, because this fill material may have to go outside the limits of the Township, and that is one ordinance that we have. So at this point, I'm asking for the Board's approval to execute this agreement.
There's fill, and then there's fill. Is this a, a clean fill, so it's, it's all organic rocks and stones, that sort of thing, or are there, are there building parts in there?
No, there's no, there's no building. It is everything that's basically fill, clean fill.
Clean fill, thank you. I make that motion. I'll second.
Since this item was not on the agenda, and if someone is interested in commenting on this agenda item alone, you can come forward and comment on the motion that is in front of the Board at this moment. Madam Chair, seeing no one moving towards the microphone, you can call for the vote.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Township Manager?
Yes, I have a couple items. The first is the Bucks County Planning Commission is gonna be working on county-wide Act 167 plan update, and a formation of a watershed planning advisory committee. Letter was sent to the municipal managers. I want to alert the Board to that. I also want to alert the Board that I and/or designee from my staff will be participating. And perhaps because it entails Act 167 and perhaps some MS4, if we need assistance from our consultants, either from Judy Stern-Goldstein or Sean Torpe from Penone, we would ask them to assist us. So I just wanted to bring that to the Board's attention and make sure if there were any concerns or questions, to let me know.
That was just my one question, is if, when they asked for an expert, if it was gonna be Township staff or they need a Board member to be part of it, it sounds like it's just Township staff.
It's Township staff, yes, Dan. Mm-hmm. Okay. The second item is, we have a vehicle from 2006. It's a Chevy Tahoe. The VIN and odometer of over 79,000 miles is being requested to go to the J.J. Kane Auction, which is going to be a public auction held June 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Get rid of it before they put a planter in it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we need to vote on the Act 167 Plan Update? I don't believe so. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. It came to my attention in the letter, so I just want to make sure you're aware that we'll be participating. Fabulous. All right, so Supervisor comments, I will start first. First, I would like to recognize the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and Jewish Heritage Month. One of our Township's oldest institutions, Del Valle University, was founded by Rabbi from Prussia, Joseph Kraskopf. He has a stunning library at the university. I went there during A-Day. It's remarkable. It's, I would love to just spend hours in there. And it's celebrating its 100th anniversary. I believe they just received a fairly large endowment for it, so congratulations to them, and I'm happy to celebrate part of our heritage here in Doylestown Township. I'd also like to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day and a happy Juneteenth. In front of you, you will see that I have presented a Human Relations Ordinance. The purpose of this ordinance is twofold. The first is to establish civil rights protections at the municipal level for specific protected classes. The protections are against discrimination due to actual perceived race, color, religious creed, ancestry, sex, national origin, disability, or use of guide or support animal because of blindness, deafness, or physical disability of the user, or because the user is a handler or trainer of support or guide animals, or because an individual's sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. These protections would relate to employment, housing, commercial property, and public accommodations. This is particularly important because explicit protections for LGBTQ people have eluded the Commonwealth since their first attempt to include them explicitly as a protected class since 1976. If the Commonwealth is not gonna codify these protections in state law, I believe it's contingent upon us to do so in order to provide a more, more steadfast protections than we have currently. Secondly, this ordinance will provide for a commission to help enforce these protections. They'll be asked with, tasked with investigating any complaints and either referring the complaint to another agency or mediating the complaint themselves. It is my belief that that is, that, that as critical as this is for the protections of our community, this role of the HRC will not be the most prominent. The second role of the HRC, which I am very interested in, will be to educate and advise. Each of us brings our life experiences with us to help shape our decisions. There are parts of our community that are underrepresented, and I believe would benefit us if they had a seat at the table. For example, while I believe we do a wonderful job at the Township at ensuring accessibility for disabled folks, I believe having someone who can speak on their personal experiences would be able to give us a much more complete understanding on how we can make the Township more accessible. We've benefited from underrepresented folks in the past to make decisions. For example, a young man with spina bifida came to our meeting, I think last year, to express the importance of road upkeep, not just for our cars and bikes, but for kids who utilize wheelchairs to be able to play with their friends. Another example is when the EAC was moving the Native American Recognition Garden, they reached out to the Lenape Nation to ensure we were honoring the native people with proper signage. While these are wonderful examples, I believe having a dedicated committee will allow for these types of underrepresented voices to be regularly heard. I would like to make a motion to advertise the ordinance included in your packet entitled Doylestown Township Human Relations Ordinance with the following changes. The word for handicap and variance be changed to disability or its equivalent variant. Additionally, on page three, under employment, the word "he" be changed to the person for consistency.
I'd like to speak to your motion, Jen, if I may. I know you're so passionate about the Human Relations Commission and creating one for Doylestown Township, and I think it needs a whole lot of attention. And before we move on, you know, before, I think it's important that we give that due attention at another date. So I would move that it be tabled at this time. We have a very long agenda, and this is a meaty ordinance, and I have a lot of concerns, and I don't think we, you know, I think, I don't want to give your, your, your motion here short shrift. I think it needs its own agenda item at perhaps the next meeting. So I move to table.
I would second that, Jen. I also have a lot of questions, everything from the, because we received it on Friday night, and listen, I commend you, I think everyone should feel safe and not be discriminated against. So I commend you on bringing this up. I do agree with Supervisor Lyons, there's a lot to this. There's a lot of definitions, the way that the commission is made up, of residents and potentially non-residents, who would impact secondary organizations, you know, schools like Del Valle, the hospital. I would, I would also, like I said, I second the, the motion to table this and have conversation with the Board, so we can understand how this would actually work.
There is a motion to table and a second. Protocol is that you call for the vote on the motion to table without any further discussion. If it passes the motion to table, the item will be, will be tabled to a, a future meeting. If it does not, then I don't believe your motion received a second at that point in time. We would see if there is a, a second, and then we would proceed with discussion and a vote.
Okay, well, there was a motion to table. All in favor? Not? Nay?
I'm sorry.
To table the motion. Yes?
Aye.
Nay, nay?
Nay.
The motion to table fails, two to three, so we now, if there's going to be a second to Ms. Herring's motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Nay? Nay. I like the idea, Jen, but this ordinance has a lot of problems with it, has a lot of concerns. How it's written, it doesn't function, and I think it could cause more problems for our residents who anticipate or expect something to be done should they have a problem that the Human Relations Commission would address and then have it not be addressed. This ordinance has no teeth to it, is complicated how it would function, you know, there's a lot of administration and staff time involved, and I don't see that in the end, that it's because it doesn't have any enforcement powers. It doesn't, you know, you could have a complaint, and someone brings the complaint, but the respondent doesn't have to answer. The person who offended that person doesn't have to answer. So there's, it stops in mid-tracks, and someone could answer, but then they decide not to do anything after that. So I don't see why would we create something, like I said, it's a very complicated, commissions are not committees. They're not, you know, temporary boards or ad hoc things. They, you know, they're legislation. They require specific rules, specific setup, administration, and then you have to follow those rules so that the commission operations equally applied. Once you get a complaint and there's no answer, there's nothing more for you to do on that particular complaint. I like the idea of the part two, the educate and advise. I think we can do that and do more without having a commission in place.
So just to let you know, there are about 70 different HRCs in, as far as municipal HRCs, in the Commonwealth. These ordinances are not created, they're created very similarly, and they've been run since the early 2000s in many cases, some of them better than others.
I have no doubt, I have no doubt that these, there are commissions that function. I'm just saying that this one is not going to function the way it is crafted. I don't, you know, maybe, a person will have a complaint, and maybe a legitimate complaint, but the person who offended that person doesn't have to respond.
Right.
There's no subpoena, they have no jurisdiction to do that.
Actually, would you like to answer?
Did you, I would need to know who even wrote this, like where did it come from? I'm just curious because it came... From another...
It's a, yeah, it's a combination of different ordinances throughout the Commonwealth. Like I said, there were 70 of them, many of them are boilerplate.
Because there was no conversation among the board, I just want...
Well, that's what the purpose of this is.
I know, but there was no even a heads up.
I can't have a board meeting behind the scenes about ordinances.
I understand, but there was no heads up. There could have been an executive session to say, this is going to happen. I think it's really important...
I don't believe you can have an executive session on an ordinance that's being proposed.
I think, we could have an executive session to talk about... I agree with Jen. I mean, we got this in our board packet, it's legitimately before us now. But I, I mean, I'm going to add, where my concerns are, Jen, since we're bringing it up, is that it says a minimum of three residents. Who would the other people that could be on there, is that people that could be living in Philadelphia that happen to work in Doylestown? Because this, the makeup of this commission does not have to be Doylestown residents. I don't believe we have any other committee that doesn't have Doylestown residents. Is that correct, in the way it's written? I believe we do.
We have other committees.
Well, the dog park, because we shared the dog park.
The dog park, TAB, bike and hike, have other people and residents from other communities participating, I believe.
Why would we open it up to other people outside of Doylestown residents? I guess that's part of my question.
Well, as a board, we would be interviewing these people for the placement. If it is a priority that it be a resident, and I would place a priority on it being a resident, that's how it would be, that's how we would vote.
And there's always, as I always say, I'm a former HR person, this is, this impacts potentially, and this is one of my questions for counsel, would this reach then out, and would it supersede Central Bucks School District policies, or Del Valle policies, or the hospital policies? Because these are all employers, big employers, in Doylestown Township potentially. Quitz is right here. You also give, you know, the definitions, like for instance, one of the things you include was genetic identification. I believe then, under that, it's specifically in that act, the Pennsylvania Act, it's for health insurance. So it felt a little bit like some of this HRC was expanded beyond what Pennsylvania offers. So Pennsylvania has a Human Rights Act, and they have a Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission in Harrisburg, but they say townships can create their own HRC.
Encourage, yes.
Yeah, and they encourage it. So I said, I'm not against doing it, but I do think that, like Supervisor Lyons said, is that there's a lot of pieces of it that aren't clear. When a claim happens, a person can ignore it, they don't need to respond, or it could cause us being legally responsible or getting stuck into a lawsuit. I don't want a bakery issue like what we saw out West. I want, I don't want division in our community. I want us to work together, and it would make more sense, and I'm pleading to the board to work together so that we can have a commission that supports everyone and affords not to have any type of discrimination, but that it's a more thoughtful and a more prudent approach rather than just rushing this through. When you create legislation, one of the most important things is you have to identify the need. And I'll take an example of the single-use plastic ordinance in front of us tonight. It identifies 14 reasons why the single-use plastic ordinance is necessary, 14. There's none any in here. I don't see, I know that there's discrimination. I don't know how a commission in Doylestown Township is going to help that when we don't see in front of us those folks who are, who have a problem, who will come to us with a problem. And when they come to us with a problem, we have no mechanism of helping them. Exactly.
So I think there's a couple problems that I see here. The first is that people who are being discriminated against often will not come forward. That's not, they wouldn't, I know if it were me, I wouldn't be coming to my Board of Supervisors in Doylestown Township to have a conversation. You know, that's just, I don't see this as the place that I would go to. So I don't think we would see it anyway. I believe our community is a good community. I believe on balance, we have some phenomenal people without any gross discrimination, but there is discrimination out there. We've seen it. We've seen it here on this, at this dais. We've seen it left outside people's mailboxes with anti-Semitic comments. We've seen it in this, in this community. And I think having this board, and maybe it's that secondary part that you actually do like, might be a place where we can actually have discussions on how to resolve some of these issues or help our community in that way.
I agree with you, but you don't need a commission to do it.
But the, I think, I think having an official seat at the table for people is an important one. I think, I think it is important. But I also want to clarify, not having teeth. So what would happen is somebody has a complaint, and if they have a complaint against their employer, they would come to our commission. This is how I've seen it work at other municipalities. I've had so many conversations with other municipalities that have HRCs. So they'll come, and they'll get the information about the complaint, and they'll do investigation in that they'll speak with the person, they'll talk to the person that the complaint was about, and try and get some consensus on what to do moving forward. If there is no consensus, then these committee members are trained to refer them to other organizations higher up in the, in the level. So for many of these protected class, they have the ability to do that now. That doesn't necessarily follow with LGBTQ folks because of the way the state has decided not to put that actually written in their legislation, but there is an executive order with a governor that would help protect LGBTQ folks, as we know. And there's also a Supreme Court ruling, but as we all know, those Supreme Court rulings can be changed in a minute, and so can executive order, so.
So Jen, so I'm just going to expand on that. So how would this then, my concern is the commission, one, you're saying they're going to be trained. That's really scary. I was in HR, and you get the wrong person who thinks they're really passionate, there's lots of different reasons why people go on commissions, and having this type of training is no joke, and it could ruin someone's life, an employer, you know, we want to be employer-friendly. So I am concerned about the qualifications and the training. The second piece is, if there is that complaint, we saw what's happening in Central Bucks, we saw what happened up at Pen Ridge, was it Pen Ridge where the girl was hit in the face with the, was it hit in the face with the Stanley Cup? Was that Pen Ridge?
North Penn.
North Penn, sorry. I mean, I would be concerned that our police who have the training, would, this would like circumvent them being involved and being aware if there is a situation. So if there is a situation, you know, whether it be something that happened at the school board, or something that's happening among students, if they're coming to this commission, like how are they working with our own police? They have the training, they need to know so they can be aware, especially if they're called into a certain circumstance.
This ordinance has nothing to do with criminal activity.
I know, it's civil, but it could elevate into something. That's my point.
No, no, it couldn't. Respectfully, if a crime is committed, that's within the police department and the district attorney's jurisdiction. What this is meant to address, what these ordinances are meant to address, if somebody feels that they're being discriminated against in housing, or employment, or in some other manner, they have a recourse. And to go back a few moments ago to one of your earlier questions about whether or not this would override the policies of the Central Bucks School District or Del Valle, I don't imagine that, I would imagine, I should say, that Central Bucks and Del Valle already have the up-to-date anti-discrimination policies in place, so this wouldn't be overriding.
I assume so, but if we change definitions, like I said to you, like specifically, which was one of the ones I looked up because I'd never heard of it before, which was... Excuse me, Nancy, could you let the solicitor finish his comment? I was, I was... I'm sorry. Can you finish what you were going to say?
Well, no, I was just, what I was about to say is, so it wouldn't change any of their policies. I'm sure that their policies are all in line with the current state of the law, but if someone at one of those institutions felt that they were being discriminated against in employment, that's when this, there would be, this would be the avenue where they could bring that dispute. There are many other places they can do it. They can go directly to the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission if they're in one of the covered groups by the PHRC.
My, you know, my concern is that Doylestown Health, for example, has its own system of addressing those sorts of complaints within its system, and most times those are adequate to address complaints, that this would be something that may not be necessary. And again, I'm going to go back to how this function, how this thing works. There's a complaint, somebody's going to answer. What if no one answers? End of story. So if we offer a system like this to the community, and the respondent or the offender doesn't participate, then we can't really, in good faith, say that this is available for you, potential person who gets offended. You can't make someone respond, you can't make someone participate. So I see it as totally not effective and ineffective, and a lot of work for no return. Again, I don't, I think we need to go back and see, what is the need that this commission could address by this township? Bucks County, the county of Bucks has its own Human Relations Commission, and like I said, in every employers, in large employers, they have a way of addressing these concerns. I mean, it's almost required in their handbooks. We have a handbook here.
But with all due respect, when we're talking about employment law, when we're asking employers to police themselves, that's not necessarily...
They're not policing themselves, they have a protocol.
They have a policy.
Yes, within, and then they have a grievance procedures, and so then you've got a whole lot, a lot more ammunition for Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, where there is enforcement and where there are fines, this, we have no enforcement, we have no ability to penalize anyone. Mostly, we can't make anyone come to the table.
Right.
The other thing about this ordinance is, you know, if it's going to go to being created for publication, there's one provision in here, the, it's like Roman numeral XXX, subparagraph A, excuse me, subparagraph B, and...
Is that the old one?
No, this was, I went through the delineations. This is part of the new one.
Okay.
Subparagraph B says, "This ordinance extends the protections of the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act to include actual or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression," so that, you know, I don't want to make light of this, I'm checking out at the Giant, and I say to the checker, "Did that nose piercing hurt?" Something innocuous, I just want to ask the question, because I know when I have my years pierced, you know, 100 years ago, that hurt. So I would have asked that question, and that person checking out, or checking me out, could anticipate, or, excuse me, could see that as an offense to whatever her clothing is, or design, her gender affiliation, and I don't know it, but she's offended, or he's offended, and this provision would apply in that situation. So whether you actually did anything or not, if it's perceived that you did something wrong, it's actionable under this commission.
Can you, can you tell us where that is again?
But Supervisor Lyons, and I understand the point that you're making, and I will, your point earlier about sometimes some of these ordinances don't have the teeth that we would like them to have, but your comment to the checker at the Giant, as long as you're not in a position to be discriminating against that person regarding employment or public accommodations, or, you, and you may have said, made your comment about the, to be, just to make a comment, not to be mean-spirited or anything along those lines, but even if you were, unless...
It's not applicable here.
It's not applicable here.
I'd also like to address the perceived sexuality or gender expression, that type of thing. A lot of times, I don't know if people are familiar with that type of terminology, but when you're speaking about perceived, oftentimes, something like this would happen.
Let me make a more concrete example then. I have someone very close to me who does commercial real estate, and he is a landlord. And he gets a violation because he didn't rent to so-and-so and so-and-so, and he or she says that it's because I have purple hair, that's why he didn't rent to me. And the landlord would have to come in and say, no, I didn't rent to her because she didn't, or him, he didn't pass the, you know, financial part of his application. So, no, you did, you know, her perception, his perception was, you offended me. It does nothing to do that I can't afford this apartment, it's that you offended me, and under this provision, that will have to be brought to this commission.
Can you tell me exactly where that is again, that you're concerned about? Because I want to clarify, when it's, when there's the term perceived...
You see violations and penalties?
Yes.
It's number, letter B, violation and penalties.
This chapter extends the protections of the PHRA to include actual or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, and, no. So what that means is, so if you haven't heard the term perceived gender orientation or sexual orientation, I'll give you an example. So I have a lot of people in my life that are LGBTQ. I also have a lot of people in my life that are not. So say one of the people in my family that is not part of that LGBTQ community gets dragged behind, or gets, tries to rent, tries to rent an apartment, and the landlord looks at them and goes, this person looks like they are homosexual, I'm not renting to them. That's the perceived part of it. It's not that, you don't have to prove that the person is gay, you have to prove that that person is being discriminated against because the person thought that they were gay. So if that makes sense. That's what the perceived sexual orientation part is. It's not, they perceive being discriminated against, it's that the other person's perceiving them as a minority.
I think we're opening ourselves up to a big fat lawsuit, Jen. I think a lot of this needs to be flushed out. I think, you know, you're giving all the powers necessary to the execution of its duties, is that police powers as well? I think it would be really smart of the board...
There's nothing in here, but...
I know we've put this to motion, but I'm just, I wanted to say it for the record, that I think we're doing a disservice not to really be prudent and go through this, because obviously, everyone in the audience is listening to us talk it out, and we're unclear. And we want to make sure that every instance and every example that we can come up with that you're explaining, or Barbara's explaining, or that I have...
up with, that you're explaining, or Barbara's explaining, or that I have questions about, or Judy thinks, or Dan thinks, that we have an opportunity to talk among all of us and do it.
So the way this body works is that ordinances are provided, I know, we all know this, but just for everybody's benefit, ordinance are provided before the meeting to be read and to be researched. That's what I do with all my ordinances. That's what I do with my packet every time, no matter how familiar I am with the topic or not. We vote to advertise. And that gives the community the opportunity to take a look at this and say, "Does this make sense? Do I need to come to the next meeting and make, you know, make my position clear? Do I need to tell the board how I feel about it?"
And the meeting is in June, is in June, in the middle of graduations and vacation.
And that's, and that is, and that is also the board's opportunity to have a discussion. We don't do things behind the scenes. This is all meant for the public. And that is, that is, that is the definition of being transparent.
That's fine. I appreciate that. I just feel that I haven't heard one thing from Judy or Dan. I'd be curious what you guys think about it.
The conversation has been dominated, dominated, so I haven't been able to say anything at this point.
Do you have anything to say?
I do, actually. I do have a question for our solicitor. When we talk about mediation and we, and if mediation fails, for people who don't have the document in front of them, how the process works is that the Humans Rights Commission can recommend mediators for the two parties to try to solve the issue between them. If that fails, then it would, it would go to the Court of Common Pleas here in Bucks County. I am curious, what is the township's responsibility in matters of mediation or court hearings? If we are required to send somebody as a representative of the township, if there's documentation, we have to provide things along those lines?
There is not. Once someone is completed with our process, any next step they choose to take, whether it's in federal court, whether it's in, with the PHRC, whether it's in the Court of Common Pleas, our process is over with. It is essentially, here, I always love when I get to use some Latin, it's de novo. It starts from the beginning. So we would have nothing to do with it. We wouldn't have to provide any of our HRC members to testify during the hearing or anything along those lines.
So the responsibility of the HRC for these complaints would be to help facilitate some kind of resolution between the two parties at the end of the day?
Correct.
Assuming that there are two parties.
And they would have to hire.
Not do any resolution unless all parties participate in the resolution.
In this ordinance, if they were to choose an outside mediator, the cost of such mediation would be borne on the parties.
And that's not a cheap process.
And that is, if they decide to go through the mediation process, they of course could use the HRC as well and not choose a third party.
And the Bucks County HRC, Barbara, that you referred to.
I don't, I know it exists. I think it's just getting up and running. I don't know how it's set up.
I know that the Borough has an HRC.
Yeah.
They've been here, I think, since, oh, four, no, 14, I think they're here 14 years, I think, 20, I'm sorry, 2010, I looked. I don't believe they've ever had a complaint. I know they have ordinances. But have there been any complaints in the Doylestown that you're aware of? Like, where did this, I'm just.
So most of the, most of the, most of the HRCs I spoke with, their primary purpose is that second, that second set.
Which we can do without a commission.
That's what, that's what I've seen. But without the commission, we don't have an ordinance protecting the LGBTQ.
Because they're protected elsewhere.
They are not.
Does this impact, I'm just going to ask, does this impact the use of bathrooms for employers? Is that part of this? If people choose to use different bathrooms, I'm just going to ask because I don't know if this is, I know it's a bigger issue, and it's not one that I really want to even approach, but I.
This would be a very good conversation to have.
But I would like to know because every employer will be impacted by this. And I think it's important everybody really understand the gravity of this.
Right, so.
This impacts anyone who believes that they have been discriminated against in employment, public accommodations, publicly offered commercial property, or housing accommodations.
So, go ahead.
And the law regarding use of bathrooms, again, with that, that's not trying to, we're not going to tell everybody what their policy needs to be. But if you feel you've been discriminated against in employment, public accommodations, publicly offered commercial property, or housing accommodations, you can, you can avail yourself of the HRC.
So public accommodation could be a public bathroom. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Accommodation. I want to say that I'm glad that this was brought forward. I'm glad that Doylestown Township is protecting people that might feel discriminated against and that they have a local venue to go to. If there's seven municipalities throughout Pennsylvania that are doing this, and Doylestown Borough is doing it, I think it's great that we could move this forward.
Okay. One other question, since, Jen, thank you for leaving the board open to talk about it. Genetic information, I thought it only applied to health insurance, but that specific was listed as one of the things to protect. I was going to ask our counsel about that. I looked up the term, so please clarify.
I'm not sure if I understand what you're.
We talked about, one of the terms they talked about is genetic information. I don't know if I highlighted it.
Just as an aside, you can see why I moved to table this, so we can have a full discussion on it.
We're having a discussion.
Yeah, I know, but, you know, it's also a very long agenda.
I understand.
That particular section I don't have in front of me right now, but we'd be happy to get that for you. And I'll tell you exactly how that relates to the nondiscrimination.
Right. Because I, like I said, I thought when I read, I looked up genetic information, it specifically was for healthcare. So that, or health insurance. So that's why I wasn't, it seemed like maybe some of the terms were expanded upon from the PAHRC. That's why I was looking to see, which they have been.
Correct.
That's, that would be one of my.
There's certain coverage that isn't done on the PAHRC, or PHRC, I'm sorry. All right. Any other comments?
It's under genetic information.
Good definition.
Did you find it?
All right.
So, Rolamed.
There you go.
What I'm, what we're presenting now is what we created with the telecommun, excuse me, telecommunications advisory board and the Capitol Campaign Committee to raise funds to build a community rec center and other park improvements. So we created this video as a, you know, fundraising tool. And so we want to share it with you all.
Doylestown Township recently held a groundbreaking to kick off an ambitious parks improvement project. We'd like to acquaint you with this project and request your financial support to complete it. The improvements will include permanent restrooms and a hydration station near Kids Castle and the amphitheater. Newly constructed outdoor sports courts will meet the contemporary demands of our community's recreational needs. The centerpiece of the project will be a new community recreation center building where individuals and families can access a gymnasium for many recreational activities, multi-use meeting spaces for education workshops and hosted events, and a patio space that can be opened to the outside during nice weather. We've been fortunate to have the support of many elected officials like State Senator Steve Sandozaro.
We just broke ground for the new community center. It's going to be a great facility for everyone in Doylestown, a great place to come and be part of the community.
We're also excited by the support others have expressed.
I'm excited about the new bocce ball courts, the pickleball courts, the tennis courts.
I'm really looking forward to having a larger community space so we can have all of our activities that I grew up doing.
My children and my grandchildren will be a part of this.
The township is continuing to do amazing work.
We have borrowed money, secured grants, and received donations to fund this project. But we need your help to close the remaining gap and accomplish the vision. Our Capitol Campaign's goal is to raise $3 million in grants, donations, and sponsorships. And we're thrilled to report that we are already over the $2 million mark. We still need your help. There are numerous ways for you to be part of the campaign, and donations big and small are welcome. There are several naming rights possibilities to explore, so you can leave your lasting legacy on Doylestown Township.
It's not for us. It's for our kids and for the next three generations. We are so happy and excited to play a part. And you can play a part, too. Here's how.
Don't wait. Play a part. You can get more information on our website.
So I wanted everyone to see that because we're raising money. We need everybody's help. We still need the full support of the board. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Judy, do you want to be next?
Yes. On behalf of the Environmental Advisory Council, they are now offering native plant garden guidance. It's coming out in an email blast, I believe, on Friday, one of our Friday email blasts. So you or your neighbors can sign up for guidance on native plant selections, enhancing biodiversity in your garden, plant placement, and maintenance. So our EAC is a wealth of knowledge, and we encourage you to go with native plants in your garden for the betterment of the bees, the bugs, the pollinators, and the birds. So that's something that we hope that you might take advantage of with your neighbors in your community. Also, on another note, I would just like to remind people, drivers in particular, to please remember in this good weather to share the road. Cyclists have four feet from your car, and if you have a pedestrian in the crossway, please yield to them in a safe manner so that we can all get through a nice, healthy, and safe summer for drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists. And that's all I have.
Wonderful. Nancy?
Sure. Jen, thank you for opening the board and being so kind with the time with the board to talk about the HRC. I also want to thank Chris Sussingath, who is going to be leading the Doylestown Memorial Day Parade. It's always a highlight for so many people. And he's also the chair of our Veterans Committee, so that's really exciting. So thank you, Chris. Thank you to the AC for the native plant. I've learned a lot, and I've been cleaning out my beds accordingly, so thank you. I also want to really address the single plastic ordinance and just sort of share my thoughts. At the last meeting, I shared my opposition, but I wanted to go back and really think about it and what I'm concerned about within the ordinance. So, you know, I do believe the community wants to take care of our earth and environment. I mean, I'm going to, like, date myself. And I remember the commercial of the American Indian looking at the pollution in the stream. We all remember that, right? But my serious reservations on this particular ordinance in front of the supervisors is that it doesn't mirror Doylestown Borough's ordinance. And I want to thank our former supervisor for coming out to speak. It is an overreach. And first of all, I do believe it'll hurt small businesses. It's requiring them to charge a minimum of 15 cents per bag. This will discourage people from shopping in the township, and possibly in the store that provides, possibly shopping in a different store or a different township that does provide a bag, or even shopping online. And for instance, you know, when the Borough introduced their single bag ordinance, they had several meetings with the public, and they eventually agreed to drop that requirement to charge customers. So I really think we're doing it, you know, we're not being retail business friendly. And I think that's not the intent of the EAC, nor is it the intent of the board. The second issue that I have with the ordinance requires our code enforcement officer to enforce the ordinance, giving out fines of $50 to $200. We always talk about not burdening our staff and adding more things to our staff and our administration. This is adding to his current job description, which is really to ensure the safety and compliance of our building and zoning and maintenance of the township. And I don't believe it's prudent to use our taxpayer dollars in this capacity. As I stated in the last Board of Supervisors meeting in April, the ordinance should be an optional to accommodate all needs and abilities of our residents. You saw that no bags, the bags with no handles can be an issue. Like I said, for me, I need a shoulder replacement. I need those handles. So I do, I'm concerned about that. I do commit, you know, support the AC and their commitment. And I think there's implications they didn't think about or consider when they were putting it together. But what I want to add is some solutions and suggestions. So I looked at what Plumstead Township's EAC offers. They have a Go Green effort that is really pretty awesome. And it talks a little bit about what Joanne talked about. What it does is, the Go Green, hold on, and I'm going to submit this to the record so we have it, is, hold on, shoot, what do I do with it? One second. Oh, here it is. They have a Go Green Business Reusable Bag Initiative. There's sponsorships involved. They get to put their names on a bag, and it's up to $1,000, $1,000, 800, 500. But it's a really great way to sell reusable bags. It's an initiative, and it's a sponsorship, and it's really working together with our businesses. And I really loved that idea. The other thing is, they actually provided a letter with education. And I think we should really be thinking about to educate rather than to mandate. So I just wanted to provide that as another option, as something for us to all consider before we take that vote tonight. I would, I'm going to ask the board to table that vote and to rethink the way the ordinance is written, or vote down the ordinance, I guess, and rewrite it in a way that's more business-friendly. The second thing is, I also wanted to add to the record, yesterday, our resident Kathleen Saroski sent an email to all of the board members regarding the township plastic bag ban. And she really cited quite a few different sources from National Geographic, Columbia University, and Forbes, a Forbes article, you know, in terms of what's happening in New Jersey. Ultimately, she asked us not to impose the plastic ban and said to work to educate people and not put thin plastic bags in with the recycling, and asked, and reminded us that there are drop-off locations for single plastic bags, such as Giant, where they make benches. So that's just really my comments. I'll give these and pass these on to be added to the minutes. Thank you. That's my piece.
Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, I do have some thoughts about the plastic bag ordinance, but I will save them for discussion when we get to that.
Thank you.
From my committees, the Planning Commission spoke more about the proposed car wash on 6/11, and that is continuing to move along. And we have comments about that later, asking for an extension. We've also spoken about the development that will be the affordable housing for veterans and seniors. Those discussions are continuing to move along. I do want to take a moment to thank the Veterans Committee for representing Doylestown Township in the upcoming Memorial Day Parade. I've been participating in the Memorial Day Parade or going to it since middle school. So it's something that I really appreciate, and I'm very proud to see Doylestown.
Just last year.
What? Thanks, Barbara. But I'm really proud to see that. I'm also very proud of the EAC. I was very much hoping to go to the, their upcoming event for the native plant garden. My son and I have participated in there multiple times. Unfortunately, we will be visiting family. But I do want to make sure they get the proper recognition. And if you haven't seen it, please go check it out. The dedication our volunteers put into it is really incredible.
Okay, thank you. So there's no unfinished business, going on to new business. We have several ordinances that were, that were advertised that are before us today. A couple of these ordinances, I believe, we are looking for some additional review. I believe that's Ordinance 7 and Ordinance 10. Can I get a motion on those two ordinances to table?
So moved.
We would ask that the motion be, that they be tabled until June 18, 2024, at 7:00 PM in this room. That's for Chapter 153, Electric Vehicles, Chapter 175, Backyard Poultry. The reason for tabling it to a date certain is so we do not have to re-advertise.
So moved.
Can I just ask, why are we tabling the poultry one? We've been going round and round and round on this.
Bucks County Planning Commission wants to do some more work on it. It's a letter. They asked us to give them more time.
Okay. Okay, so was, there was a motion, was there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the rest of these, I would like to have a motion to do in total.
Mrs. Solicitor, do we have to open up to have a public hearing on these before we move for their approval?
Not all of these require public hearings.
Okay.
But the ones that did were the ones that we just. But the ones that did were the ones that we just tabled, which were the amendments, zoning ordinance, and the Saldau.
Then I move that we approve in tandem 1 through 6, 8 and 9, and 11. If you want to know what they are, they're Open Burning Fire Protection, Green Points Program, Move-In Permit, Soil and Erosion, Stormwater Management, Water, Wells, Streets and Sidewalks.
About a second?
A second.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Dan.
I'll give a tan. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and so that leaves us with our single-use plastic ordinance. I believe the EAC has a PowerPoint presentation they would like to do.
Jim Baldassari, I'm the Chair of the Doylestown Environmental Advisory Council, and I'd like to just set the table for the ordinance which has been proposed, and I know there were some comments earlier, which I certainly appreciate, and comments which we have thought about, so let's lay it out there and we can have the discussion. So to be clear, we use billions and billions and billions of plastic bags, and straws, and forks, and knives, and cups every year. These get used for a few moments, and then they end up in our landfills or environment where they remain essentially forever because they do not biodegrade. So they may break down into tiny particles, which you can't see, but you can ingest, but they never actually leave the environment. They pollute our parks, our local waterways, and the oceans in particular. They harm and kill all kinds of wildlife, fish, seabirds, turtles, and they have a significant effect on human health as well. They generate microplastics, which are toxic. These are tiny particles which we inhale, which we ingest. Our bodies are loaded with microplastics. We can find them in our livers. These are heavy metals, they're BPAs, they're PFOs and PFAs, the forever chemicals. So this is a legitimate human health hazard in addition to what it's doing to our environment. Now, the plastic industry would have you believe that these plastic bags are readily recycled, and the fact is they are not. This is misinformation. We know that single-use plastic bags are very rarely recycled. The vast majority end up in landfills or incinerators or in the environment. The ones that end up in our recycling bins actually impede the ability to recycle other products, and I've seen this with my own eyes down in Philadelphia. They literally melt and clog up the machines, so you can no longer recycle the paper and the glass and the steel. So they're really a detriment to the recycling system. Even if you take them to a dedicated recycling center, a small fraction of those will be recycled, and we know about trex decking and benches and so on and so forth, but the vast majority of those still end up in landfills. Often, they're shipped to Asia because they have no environmental regulations, and they end up being dumped into the waterways in Asia, and they end up in the Pacific Ocean. So I wish that we could recycle these, and I wish everyone was as diligent as most of you are in terms of reusing these bags, but that's, unfortunately, that's not the reality. Oops, let's see here. We talked about clogging things up, and, okay, these are bottles, but we know that these things end up all over the environment. We know they end up in the water, and the interesting thing about this photo is that most of the plastic in that picture is invisible because it's microplastics, which are too small to see. And these particles are so small that we ingest them, we inhale them, and they're just everywhere, ubiquitous in our environment. The good news is that Pennsylvania is taking action. We have plastic ordinances in 29 municipalities now, including Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, including Salisbury, including the Borough, including Newtown Township, Newtown Borough, and all these other communities you see here listed before you. So 18% of Pennsylvanians are now covered by a, some kind of single-use plastic bag ban. So we are certainly not on the cutting edge of this. Now, I know there's a concern about notification, and I, we were very sensitive to that. We did a very extensive community outreach. We had a web-based community survey back 2018, 2019, before COVID, and in that web-based survey, 70% of the residents supported a single-use plastic bag ban. We've been participating in a regional coalition, exchanging ideas and best practices. We've done community engagement at table events and through Facebook. We've provided educational packets to the Board of Supervisors. We have already passed a resolution for a voluntary reduction of single-use plastic. That was at the end of 2021. So that is the official policy of the township, is to voluntarily reduce plastic bag use, but I don't think we've actually seen that come to any fruition. We did do a door-to-door business survey in June of 2022. Heidi was with me, and we had other people went door-to-door to virtually every business, certainly south, south of the Borough, and some in the Borough as well. So we went to as many businesses as we could possibly get to. Now, that was a while ago, and we certainly didn't talk to, may have talked to every individual, but we certainly made an attempt to talk to every store, and I think we did get to. And I have that data, we've presented that to the supervisors before. We've created engagement letters, and we wrote letters to all of the restaurants in the township talking about ways to reduce single-use plastic, and we've presented all these results to the Board of Supervisors. Actually, it's more than a year ago. So we've made a very extensive effort at community outreach, and I know we haven't reached everyone, but we've certainly tried. Now, I just want to hit on the salient points of this ordinance. This is a ban on single-use plastic bags, which are given out at the point of checkout. So all the other plastic bags that you get are exempt from this. So if you buy a loaf of bread in a plastic bag, that's exempt. If you buy chicken, or fish, or meat that's wrapped in plastic, that's exempt. The produce bags, or the bags you use for loose groceries, all of those are exempt. So there will still be plenty of bags floating around in the supermarkets. There is a six-month running period before implementation so that store owners can become aware of the ordinance, draw down their stocks of plastic bags, and prepare to transition to paper. And we know that this can be done because the Borough has done it. The nature of the reusable bags is described. These bags need to have sewn-on handles, and they need to be fairly sturdy. Paper bags are not being banned, so there will still be plenty of paper bags, but there will be, we are proposing a fee on the paper bags. The bag must contain at least 40% recycled fiber, and the vendor must charge a minimum of 15 cents per bag to defray the cost of providing that bag. Now, there is a reason for this, because we know from wide experience throughout the United States that if you do not have a fee for the paper bag, you simply switch from plastic to paper, and you create a new problem. Now you're using, you know, millions and billions of paper bags instead of plastic bags, and that creates another kind of problem. We really want to drive people to get used to the idea of a reusable bag. Many of us are already doing it, many stores do this as a matter of policy, Wegmans is doing this on a voluntary basis, and so, you know, this certainly can be done. I understand the agita that the fee causes, but it is best practices in terms of environmental protections. And I just want to reiterate that this fee is not a tax, that fee stays with the vendor and to defray the cost of providing the bag. So let me just stop there and see if there are any questions.
You have to come up to the microphone.
If we could direct anyone with questions to the center microphone, so Mr. Baldassari can answer them on the other microphone.
In Section 3, Section 3 of the proposed ordinance...
Can you say your name?
I'm sorry.
Municipality?
Yeah, Marion Davies, Doylestown Township. In Section 3F, where it describes the recycled paper bag, shall mean a paper bag that meets the following, and there's three criteria. While we were having the meeting, I looked at several of the bags that I brought as examples. None of these fit the three criteria, so they would not be able to be used by retailers. So my question is, how are you going to ask the retailers that are affected in the township to show you that the bags that they're going to provide or sell, actually be forced to sell, are going to meet those three criteria?
So what I would say is this, all of these 29 other municipalities are doing that. They are providing bags which meet those criteria. They're not hard to find. And this gets to the other issue of enforcement, and I know, Nancy, you raised this as well. It's certainly not my expectation that Sinclair is going to go out and police every merchant in the township. I think this is going to be a matter of self-policing or complaints by residents who find that businesses are willfully flouting this. So I think this is, I think this is going to be a sort of a passive kind of enforcement process. But those kind of bags you're talking about, to replace a bag that does not have 40% recycled material with one that does have 40% recycled material should be pretty easy. Everybody's doing it.
Jim, I have a question for you regarding, something that was talked about in the EAC, and I just want to clarify, this was still something that was proposed, of the EAC working to give out free reusable bags as part of their budget.
Yes, we actually, we actually have purchased reusable cloth bags, and I haven't seen them yet, but I think we will be giving some of those away at the garden party, actually.
Okay, and just for reference, Giant was giving them out for free at an event over this week, and I think, I believe they've given them out for free at the National Night Out as well. So there are places to get these bags for free, essentially.
Yes, I don't know about that specifically, but again, and I do want to say that, you know, giving away the reusable bags for free is not a great idea either, because we don't want them to become disposable. The idea of the reusable bags, it has to be reused.
I agree with the retailer who spoke earlier, that I think it's a little bit of overreach for us to require the retailers to charge the consumer or the patron 15 cents. I wouldn't want someone to interfere, local government to interfere with my way of doing business. I understand, I totally support the single-use plastic bag thing, but I think it's a little bit much for us to tell retailer how to do her business. That's my only concern with this.
So I, one of the questions that came up, or concerns came up, was disease or infection or, you know, the spread of disease with these bags. Have you seen any of the indication that that's actually happening?
No, absolutely not.
And just to be clear, even though I'm sitting up here today, I spent many, many years of my life working in a retail grocery store, and we did grapple with these questions a lot, so I do understand the business side of this as well.
I mean, there's a certain amount of common sense involved here, you know, if you have a bag in it, fish or meat leaking into the bag, chicken, they should be washed. You can put them in the washing machine.
Dr. Snyder has a question. Please.
No, you can comment.
Okay. Well, look, it's like my height. I have a few comments. First of all...
Do you want to identify yourself?
Oh, I'm Beth Snyder, and I live in the Borough, but my office is in the township.
Thank you.
A couple of comments. First of all, there's a lot of members of Costco. Costco does not provide bags. They'll give you a cardboard box. People pay to have a membership at Costco to have the privilege of not being given bags. It just strikes me as funny that we have such a hang-up, because personally, I do think, I do think it makes sense to have the fee, and here's what my thinking is, a couple of things. One, more and more businesses are actually charging if you use a credit card, right? I've grappled with that in my own office. Should I charge that 3% surcharge to use a credit card? But they've gotten past that, and people are doing that. McCaffrey's was giving you a 5 cent credit to use your own bag. Now, I am my own bag user forever. I mean, my car is full of bags, okay? I do not, will not use plastic bags, and yet, I'd watch people walking out, even though I got my 5 cent credit, people would walk out with plastic bags. So it strikes me that giving a credit is not enough of a reward. It's not enough to change the behavior. And unfortunately, people seem to respond better by, I hate to use the word, a punitive action, but basically, it seems to change behavior. And I think that if enough people go, geez, they're going to charge me 15 cents, I'll go get my bag from my car, I truly don't think it's going to stop people from going to stores. If you buy online, you may be paying shipping. Amazon, if you're not paying shipping, you're probably, you're A, paying an annual membership, and you may even be paying more for a product. So I don't really buy that you're going to discourage people from buying locally.
I would just say, I spoke to the people at Acme. They had the seniors that come into the Acme, once the Acme stopped giving the bags, they all go to Weiss. So once this happens, so I'm just saying, it does change, it does change behaviors 100%. And I, Jim, I will ask you what your sources were. I always told you early on...
Nancy, can Miss... But can Dr. Snyder continue?
Well, no, but you know what? You make an excellent point, Nancy, is that they did shift, but that's the beauty of having everybody doing the same thing. Well, I mean, theoretically, if Weiss is charging 15 cents, maybe they'll all go creeping back to Acme. I don't know, but the point is, we have to stop this behavior. We have to stop the plastic bags, and if this is what it takes, for goodness sakes, if it's that hard for you to bring in your own bag, maybe 15 cent charge will be enough. I don't know. I mean, like you said, there's still going to be plastic bags. And the last point is that the cost of the bags aren't cheap, and so why not let the store owner recoup the cost of the bags? Just, you know, it seems fair to me, and...
So my point to you on this, Beth, is we, last October, we sat as a board and had a room full of people talking about a park and rec center, and the one person that stood out to me was the woman who came up and spoke, and she talked about how expensive it is to live here in Doylestown, and I think we just got voted like best place to live as a single. I think someone forwarded me that article. But she talked about the importance of being able to get that dinner for $2 at the community center. So that 15 cents may seem miniscule to you, but may not be to somebody else. And we have to remember, every single resident, we represent everybody. It's not whether, how we feel about the environment or not about the environment. It's about representing every resident, creating affordability, and also being business-friendly.
But Nancy, there's nothing unaffordable about... If they bring their own bag, it costs them no 15 cents. And like we just heard, there's people who are giving away free bags.
Not all the time. I respectfully disagree.
The EAC has free bags that they've offered, and that are available.
We have some, I can't say that we have enough for the entire township.
I mean, if I'm shopping for, and I'm obviously the one who's questioning it, if I'm shopping for my family of five, and I have three party boys, I've got a good 20 bags of food. If it's just me and my husband and we're in the empty nest, then maybe it's four bags. So it really varies, and I'm just, I just, you need to, I'm just asking you to see both perspectives.
Yes.
And especially, that's all I'm looking for.
I think, I think we understand, yeah.
I'm going to make one last comment. My daughter was living in Alaska when they changed the rules about plastic bags, and her environmental club, what they did was they went to a thrift shop and bought T-shirts and created bags out of T-shirts, which cost them nothing because the thrift shop gave them the bags. It's very easy to make it. I mean, there's ways around, and we just have to create the concept that there's got to be a different way, whether it's people make their own or they get them from free. I have so many in my car. If there's anybody in this room that needs one, I will give you one.
I'll see. Educate, not mandate, that would be my suggestion.
Thank you.
Hi, Joanne from Warrington, business owner here in Doylestown, small business owner. I hire and employ women, grandmothers, students of our community, and I make sure that I am, I work with the community, and I also am very philanthropic within the community. So I give back. This 15 cents may not be a big deal for the Costcos and the Weiss's and the Wegmans of the world, but for the small business owners, it really is. It will make a difference for some of my customers who will come in and say whether or not they're going to shop in my store or go down to Valley Center, where they can go to J. Jill or go to a Chico's and get their purchase and not have to bring the bag and get the full experience. I have a different business model. We need to consider everyone. We just can't consider big America. They will, they may decide to start shopping online and get the free item, the free shipping, and now we're affecting our carbon footprint because now we're going to put more Amazon pine trucks on the road. There could be a trade-off. So we need to consider everyone and how this affects us. So if the Borough is not charging the 15 cent, what's going to stop them from just going to the Borough and not coming down into Doylestown and shopping my store? So if we need to consider it, do we need to consider it being a more level playing field? Because now I have to compete with them, not only with my goods and services, but now I got to compete as to whether or not I charge...
Because now I have to compete with them, not only with my goods and services, but now I got to compete as to whether or not I charge them 15 cents for a bag. I think we need to think about this a little bit harder and how it not only affects big box, but how it affects us small business people.
Thank you. You have to stand up at the microphone.
Sorry, we asked for the microphone because of the recording process.
The question is, how did you determine the 15 cents? What was the, what was the thinking? I'd love to know that. And why is it that the borough doesn't charge?
The borough doesn't charge for, for the reasons which were just discussed. Many of them were already giving out paper bags and didn't want to now ask their customers to pay for something that they were already getting for free. And I understand that. Farin Savitz is here from Penn Environment. So Farin, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that the 15 cent fee was selected because we, we know from empirical evidence that that's the tipping point that really starts to drive people towards using their reusable bags. If the fee is less than that, people tend to just pay the fee and, and use the paper bags, and you don't solve the problem of shifting from plastic to paper.
What was the sources that you used? So when you showed the pictures and you showed the plastic and the breakdown, what sources? Like, Jimmy, you and I had that conversation. I'm going to ask you, who are your sources?
Yeah.
Where are you getting your references from? Because there's so many, sitting up here, I think everybody feels torn, because we all want to do the right thing.
Yep.
And we're incredibly grateful for what the EAC does. You guys are leaders, and I've said that to you. But at the same time, we're trying to look at the whole picture and, you know, the 15 cents, I'm trying to understand, where did that number come from? What's your source? And why, why should we be doing this?
Hi, I'm Heidi Schreiber from Doylestown Township. I'm also in the EAC and the Vice Chair. I just want to jump in real quick, Nancy. We did provide a packet to the board back in 2018, 2019 with pages and pages of information and resources and references.
I'm looking for this ordinance right now. Was there a specific source that you use? Like, was there an article? Is there an organization? Who are you using as your reference to, when you're presenting this? Because you're asking the board to approve something that impacts every small business, every business in the Doylestown Township. And we have to look at everything.
Right.
When we're, it's not just the environment, it's the whole makeup of the township.
Sure. That, that's, that ordinance is, is based on a model ordinance, which is coming from Penn Environment. And this is, it is essentially the same ordinance in all 29 jurisdictions that I, that I listed earlier.
Except the borough does not charge, nor do they have a code enforcement.
That's.
So if we didn't charge, we wouldn't have the code enforcement involved, and we wouldn't have.
Well, you might have code enforcement for the type of paper bag, but, but you're, you're right. Some, some communities have no fee, some have a 10 cent fee.
Okay.
So it's, the fee, the fee, the fee does vary across jurisdictions.
I'm just looking for compromise. And, and I said, I would ask the board to consider what Plumstead did as well.
Any other, any other board questions?
I, I have questions, but I would like to give our residents a chance to talk before I ask my questions.
I'm sorry. Peter?
Okay. Pater Cox, I live in the township. Right up front, I got no problem with banning plastic bags. I lived and worked in places around the world where the piles of trash with plastic bags were totally obscene. My wife's ship, when she was at sea, sucked up plastic bags from the Atlantic and from the Mediterranean, to the point where it literally damaged a multimillion dollar warship. I don't have a problem getting rid of them. None at all. I don't have a problem with requiring that they recyclable bags be used. The problem that I have is dictating to the business owners, we don't, we don't own the businesses, dictating to the business owners that they must charge a certain amount of money. What you should actually say is, you are authorized to charge up to, and allow the business owner to exercise their own discretion. If they've got bags and they've got a good contract source that's providing them to them for five or six cents a bag, why should we tell them to charge 15 cents? Give them the option. Don't be dictatorial and don't demand. You'll get a lot more support out of the business owners that are sitting in this room and that work in this township than if you tell them they have to charge, because they will lose business. Pointing example, Wawa. You go to the one that's right inside the borough, over on 611 coming in, you pay 28 cents a bag if you want the Wawa bag. But if you go to the one that's over down, down the road, next to where Weis is, which is outside of the borough, you get your bags free. The one in town is losing business. They've had to lay off employees, because they're not making enough money. The one outside of town is hiring as fast as they can. So just look at it from that perspective.
Thank you.
I have a question for Pater. Pater, so if you saw all the trash bags or the plastic bags when you were in your travels, and your wife saw the travels, all the plastic when she was in her travels, and we know from what Jim just said, that the 15 cents just, does change behavior from people stopping to use plastic bags. Does, does that not make a difference, in your opinion, since you've seen so many problems with the plastic bags?
You ban the plastic bags. Tell people, tell the businesses that they can't use the single use plastic bags, that they have to use a different bag that is recyclable, that can, I mean, paper bags, if you throw them out in your garbage and they go to the garbage dump, that paper is going to dissolve in a reasonably short period of time, just because of all the, all the other waste that goes in with it. And it goes away. The plastic bags don't. And that's what I saw in countries like Haiti, in El Salvador, in Nigeria, where I was working for the military, massive piles of garbage in plastic. And it never goes away. And it doesn't get cleaned up, because they can't afford to clean it up. And you're right. The ships, the barges that are going from the Pacific coast to Asia to dump garbage that's all plastic bags, they go out every single day. So get rid of the plastic bags, go to the recyclable types of bags, but give the business owner the option of charging for what they give to their clients, their customers, up to 15 cents a bag. Don't dictate, just regulate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a very long agenda, so if you wouldn't mind.
I understand.
Thank you.
I'm trying to stay in business.
Thank you.
I just want to piggyback. I agree. If you had, if we approached things differently with the small business owners, we would definitely be more open to the conversation. You know, he did mention that there was community outreach to contact the business owners. I am literally in the shopping center across the street, and I went door to door to every business today before I came here. None of them knew anything about this. Not one business. So I, I'd really like to see the data as to whether or not we were contacted. I've been in business, I opened my business during COVID, and I've been there for four years. What, what really doesn't sit well is the reinforcement or the enforcement of the, the ban and the ensuring that I would be charging. You know, I'm right across the street from the Bucks County Correctional Center. And I, to hear that, you know, you guys are going to have this enforcement, and if I don't follow, I'm going to be charged. There's a lot of things that are happening with the Bucks County Correctional Center, where people are getting released and they're showing up at my store. And I don't feel that there are things that are, that we're feeling safe at times. And yet, we're going to give this time for this enforcement agent to come around to make sure that I'm charging 15 cents. It takes me, it takes me back a little bit, because we don't feel safe in our shopping center at times, because I have to offer a place for these newly released convicts to charge their cell phones almost on a daily occasion. But yet, we're going to have an enforcement officer come and make sure that I am charging 15 cents for my bag. So please really consider, especially what Peter said, let us be the deciding factors to whether or not we want to upcharge the customer, because we really want to make this a great place for our people to, our customers to shop and live. Thank you.
And ma'am, just so you understand, and anyone else may understand, the police department handles public safety in the township. The code enforcement department handles violations of the township's codes.
Mary Ann Davies, again. I just have another quick question. Would the, does the ordinance cover the use of plastic personal item bags that are given out in hospital, in the hospital, for example, to patients or brought into the emergency room? They have to change, maybe they're an accident victim. The soiled clothing and all that is usually put in a, a very heavy duty plastic bag. And I imagine also in nurses' offices at the schools, if there's, you know, an accident with a child or whatever, they have to put, they're not going to use a paper bag. So I was wondering if that is addressed in the ordinance.
Those type of ba, bags would not be banned at all.
Is that in here?
It's, doesn't say that that type of bag is banned. It lists the types that are.
I, I have, Ms. Davies, I've mentioned that several times as a concern, that I don't want those bags banned, because of exactly that use case.
I wanted to, I wanted to clarify.
If you can again state your name and whether you're a resident.
Ed Shepard, Doylestown. Your presentation said that the point of the 15 cent fee is to actually encourage the reusable bags. All right. You had mentioned, you know, Weis getting more business. I have end stage renal failure. I have a lift restriction on this arm. If I use this arm, the access clots, I barely survived them putting this in. They can't put it in anywhere else. So I go to Weis, because that is quite literally the only place where I can go buy, buy food and be able to carry the bag outside. It's the only way I can get food. I, I can't carry a paper bag. I can't carry a reusable bag. I'm not the only one. End stage renal failure is ADA protected. We talked, for the other ordinance, we talked about the PHRC, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. I'm familiar with them. I've had to go against an employer for that, and I've gone to bat for a lot of people like me, who, who I want to learn from my experience. I will go to bat for folks like me all day long. I'm, I'm lucky enough to be able to walk and still function. What sort of accommodations do people protected by the ADA have under this? We can't all use those bags. We're physically not able. And in fact, you, you mentioned the, the Human Relations Commission you're all trying to pass. Based upon what I read, I would be able to bring a complaint against Doylestown Township, against this ordinance, using that newly created Human Relations Commission, because there doesn't appear to be any ADA exceptions in this. So is that something that was considered when you made this ordinance about the ADA considerations and protections?
I'm sorry, can I, I'm not clear why you could carry a disposable, a, a single use plastic bag, but you wouldn't be able to carry.
It has, it has handles.
It has handles.
And it's, and it's, I can keep it under 10 pounds.
Well, you can, but you could do that with a reusable bag as well. It has handles and you can keep it under 10 pounds.
I have yet to, you go to Acme, not a single one of those paper bags has handles.
No, no, I'm, I'm, we're encouraging you to use the reusable bags with handles. That's, that's the whole point.
And those, those are too large for, for me to use. That, that's what I'm saying, is that I have, I have to buy like one meal at a time. It's the only way I can get food out of there. Because the alternative is, they can't do dialysis for me, and that's, that's not an option.
I understand, I understand the, the issue, yeah.
So that's what I asked. It's, what sort of ADA considerations were taken when, when this was crafted?
I'm not aware that this has ever come up at another, Farin, are you aware of this, that in any of the other Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, or any other places?
Yeah, and this ordinance doesn't implicate the ADA.
But for, for some, for a business who may not know Mr. Shepherd's situation, maybe they don't offer a bag, or they don't have a bag, or they can't accommodate him, then we have an issue, right? I'm, I'm just trying to understand, what's the, what's the consequence, or how does that work?
I'm not the only one with a lift restriction.
We're, we're able to pass this ordinance, there, there are not ADA implications of this ordinance.
I just described one.
But would an employer, I'm sorry, not, would employer not potentially give out a bag? So I'll give you the example. I was in Montgomeryville, and I went to the Home Sense to buy a gift. And I had a little gift bag, but they said, we're not giving out any bags whatsoever. So some businesses may decide not to give out bags at all. So then someone like Mr. Shepherd would not have any option?
Mr. Shepherd's option respectfully would be to have a bag that he is capable of carrying. That would be your accommodation. Having a bag that you can carry. If you're saying the bags that they give out are too heavy for you, then respectfully, just don't put as many things, put only the weight that you can carry.
Okay, if that's the answer, that's the answer. And then, just the last one, with the, with the reusable bags. Like, you had mentioned, you have like 20 bags, you have like three hungry kids. So did you take a look at the increased energy usage from having to constantly clean those bags? Because like you pointed out, like if you put meat or like, you know, chicken in there, it's the other, that, that's why a lot of these places see the astronomical rise in food poisoning, because they're not cleaned thoroughly and properly, because it is a high energy use, machine that's expensive and does pretty good, and not good for the environment.
Yeah, I mean, we, we use our, I mean, this is my personal experience. We use our reusable bags constantly. We use them frequently. And we clean them if they appear to be dirty. Occasionally, we throw them in the washer. But it doesn't really require much more than that, to be perfectly honest. And again, I'm, I'm not aware, and as, as chance would have it, I'm a physician of infectious diseases. I'm not aware of any outbreaks of any kind associated with the use of reusable bags. So I think the risk of that is extremely low.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Is that all for public comment?
It looks like it.
Okay. I, I do have some comments that I, I'd like to bring up. First, as far as getting plastic bags banned, I, I do road cleanups on Edison-Furlong and Turk Road multiple times a year. And I've pulled so many plastic bags off the side of the street and out of storm drains. They are there, as well as many other things that end up there. So it, it is a problem, and I look forward to a day where I don't have to, to pull those out. What has been stressing me out all weekend, thinking about this since I got the packet, and even since we discussed this earlier, is that 15 cent fee. And I've been going back and forth about it. And one of my biggest concerns about it is, while it is, has good intentions to get people to reuse, to use reusable bags, I do have concerns about it as an unintended hardship for our more financially challenged individuals in the township, and especially at 15 cents. I looked at, I went through all the ordinances that the EAC provided in their slideshow, and the vast majority of them are only charging 10 cents for their, for their bag fee. I would, and Wegmans itself is only 5 cents. So I would like us to consider, I, I understand the, the desire to help offset the costs for, for our businesses and the desire to help instill a, the habit of using reusable bags. But I would like us to consider reducing that from 15 to either 5 or 10 cents, to try to offset the cost. And I look at it as 10 bags would cost you a dollar, kind of thing. Or if it's 5 cents, e, even less. The other, so I, I do want to circle back to that. The other point I would like to bring up, that's a concern for me, is this ordinance does not address online pickup or delivery options for people who use that for grocery shopping. And while I've thought about the fee, we are not, the thing about the fee is it's not a mandated fee for the resident to pay. They can use a reusable bag and not have to pay the fee. In the case of online ordering or a delivery for, or pickup, they are not going to be given that opportunity. They will be forced to pay that fee every time they order. And I know from experience that Giant is pretty generous with the bags, separating one bag of frozen corn from everything else. I don't feel the need to address this tonight, but in a future meeting, I would like, if we pass this ordinance, I would like to amend the ordinance to, at the very least, follow Pittsburgh's model and exclude pickup from that, and may, and also look into excluding delivery. I understand that this would give people a chance to circumvent the fee by doing this. But my concern is more about getting plastic bags off, out of circulation than a concern about paper bags. Like I said, I would like to address that in the future. I don't feel the, since it's 180 day implementation, I don't feel the need that it needs to be in there tonight. But I would like to discuss the possibility of lowering the, the fee this evening. And if we can do that without having to re-advertise the ordinance.
I think there is an option for 5 cents a bag.
I would, I, I'm curious the rest of the board's opinion. 5, 5 or 10 cents would be fine. Obviously, I would rather go with a lower one.
I agree with you. We're going to charge, upcharge by cents. It's a lot more, it's a lot easier to swallow, I think.
With the option, they can charge up to 10 tenths, but there'd be an option.
That's not how this, the ordinance is.
I understand, but that's how I feel.
I'm comfortable with having a lower bag.
If, if I can ask our solicitor, if we, if we change the, the fee per bag, does that require a re-advertising of the ordinance? Or can we go ahead with it as is?
We do not believe. We do not believe that it will require re-advertising if you are lowering the fee from 15 cents to 10 or 5 cents. As we have offered the opinion previously, if you eliminate the fee entirely, that would require re-advertising. But simply dropping it from 15 cents to 5 or 10 percent would not require re-advertising.
I make a motion that we move forward with this ordinance with a 5 cent bag fee and have a future amendment to potentially look at delivery and pickup exclusions of the bag fee.
I would second without the last part.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
Okay, we do that, okay.
Yeah, we shouldn't mix both of those things together. That's just something you can direct.
Yeah, I would like to work with the EAC to an extent to really look at the delivery stuff because I've seen different things and understand that, so that there's no dire rush. But I would agree about the moving forward with the 5 cent change.
Okay, so is there a second?
Do you want to just restate your motion?
Well.
Restate your motion, Judy.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the ordinance with the change to a 5 cent bag fee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm voting no, only because I don't believe you should be using a code enforcement officer to enforce it.
All right, so moving on, land development. Mr. Clark? Yes. You have something to say?
We, I can, I'll start it.
I think we just, excuse me, because I was looking at for something in the ordinance because I do believe the issue that Dan mentioned is addressed, but I'm trying to find that in the ordinance right now.
With the.
We voted to amend it and then did we vote to approve the ordinance? I apologize, I was.
She, she.
I believe.
Supervisor Dixon's was to.
To approve and amend, no. Yes, it was two-part.
Approve and amend.
Very good. My apologies.
I'd be happy to talk more about the grocery thing, but I think specifically that is not addressed. But we can discuss that more after this meeting.
Okay, next is land development. Kuzlumentry School is requesting a waiver of land development. They are improving their playground and making it more accessible and it's a very de minimis area that they are expanding into an area that is not currently developed. So they've requested the waiver and we're looking for the board's approval of that. And I guess, Mr. Clark, will you do a land development waiver agreement if the board approves it?
We will. And as you've indicated, this plan that they're proposing falls under the land development section. But because of the small nature of the improvement, it is appropriate for a waiver of land development.
I move that we approve the request for the waiver of land development for Kuzlumentry.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Sorry. Okay.
Okay. The next is the approval of what we refer to as an operation and maintenance for an on-lot septic system. This is a requirement of the Pennsylvania DEP for 202 Briarwood. They went through the zoning hearing board for a special exception on an in-law or accessory dwelling. And as part of that, they've increased and had to put in a second system. And the DEP has required us to enter into that on-lot maintenance and management agreement. Most of it is all on them with our observations from time to time. Looking for the board's approval to accept that.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The next is a request from JDL-DYL Properties at 1796 Eastern Road for an extension of the land development through June 18th.
I move that we approve the extension of this land development to June 18th.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As I mentioned earlier, we received the additional funds for the southeastern road trail from the borough township. And we have a proposal from Chris Stanford, our bike hike consultant, for Baker to do the appropriate design engineering for $50,000. If questions, Mr. Kelso from our bike hike committee is here to address those.
I move that we approve the service agreement and authorize Michael Baker to undertake that for the southeastern road.
May I ask a question? Before we approve it?
Let's do a second and then before we vote, we'll.
I'll second it.
Okay. Just one question. Stephanie, you said we got the funding, is this 100% now funded?
It's 100% construction based on the estimates that Michael Baker provided.
So what other, so will there be other expenses attached to this trail?
At this time would be the requirements of the township as the match to do the engineering design, preliminary design engineering work associated with it.
So is there a range of what that could potentially cost the township?
At the present, the proposal is for $50,000. I defer to Mr. Kelso as to whether or not there could be additional fees should something come up in the future.
And where would that money come from?
We would work with our finance department. Typically, we pull that from our off-site or capital reserve funds that we have. Somebody left their glasses at the podium.
Oh. I just.
We spread the costs for Baker. The township's responsibility is for the design of the system, that's our contribution.
Okay.
It's rare to have a grant that covers 100% of construction and that's a blessing on any of these projects because of the unknowns we have too. So we split Baker's design in two. We have the preliminary design in front of you right now, which takes us through almost everything. It takes us to the point of what's left to do is putting the bidding documents together. And that fit into your budget, I think, better, Stephanie, if I remember.
Yes. I had asked, just to be clear, I had asked Stephanie for an opportunity to understand how a bike trail comes from inception to being put in and all the costs that are associated with it. Because at the budget meeting, I had asked about, you know, our parks and recs in lieu of fee. And there's a lot of parks and recs desires through their comp plan. And I love our trails, I use a couple of them like every day. But I'm also trying to understand, not just, great, we got another grant, but all the money that is associated with, that we're then responsible for. Because if it's coming, there's only one pot, so it's coming from somewhere, that's why I asked Stephanie. So it's not that I'm against it, I was just trying to understand what's the total cost to the township. And also, I was also concerned because is this trail going to be along Eastern Road? Are we back to the same situation that we have with the Parkway where the trail's along the Parkway? Is that going to be the same situation? That was my other question.
It's not the same situation.
Okay.
The preliminary sign that Baker did during the feasibility study.
Do you want to do the speakers that can hear you?
The preliminary, the first part of this process was doing a feasibility study and Baker did that for us. And as part of that design, they added curbs. It's showing a curb along that, separation, I think six feet or more separation between the road and the trail. So it's more of a sidewalk, the curbs provide some protection. Parkway doesn't have curbs.
Right.
They really don't have any.
Right.
And we're talking about southeastern road, which is, the speeds there are much more controlled, I think, than the Parkway. No?
No. I mean, like I said, it just, for me, it's safety and it's money. And that's really, I'm just trying to dissect those two pieces.
Thank you for all your work on this, Tom, appreciate it.
Thank you.
For all that you do.
My pleasure all the time.
Thank you. I move we call a question.
All right, calling the question. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the proposal which you heard a presentation previously on, which is the contract with Oracle NetSuite. And I believe the total amount is $126,061.92, is that correct, Ken? Yes. And yes, yes. And Mr. Wallace is here. If the board has any further questions regarding the contracts with Oracle NetSuite, I will say that our solicitor's office has reviewed those documents in total. There are some additional fees for time and material if that goes over and the board has the full contract in front of you.
I move for the approval of the Oracle in three parts, the ordering document, the professional services document and the public sector agreement for the Oracle Cloud Services.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then, what do we have?
Video?
Yes. This is coming to you from the Telecommunication Advisory Board. And this is for the system design contract for broadcast and live streaming in the community recreation center, should we want to do that in the future. The Telecommunication Advisory Board is recommending using AVT, Applied Video Technology, to do the assessment of the system and design the system and utilizing funds for $2,500 for the, would come from the funds that the Telecommunication Advisory Board has.
I move that we approve the design system contract for broadcast and live stream systems to the Applied Video Technology for $2,500.
I second. All in favor?
Can I ask a question? Sorry.
Sure.
The 2,500, that's just to put the proposal together? Why wasn't this? That's for the design.
That's for the design of the system.
Why wasn't this done when we did the original rec center? Like, didn't we look at any of the systems at all? I'm just. The telecommunications advisory board does, you know, meets with the project as it comes up. And this is what it wants, it asks to do. It wants to create the design for the video systems necessary for the building. Whether, there's a whole lot of soft costs that are not part of the, you know, what was approved. Those are fit-outs and furnishings that are set. So that's, it's in the soft cost bucket? I guess so, but this is, this is what they think they need to do. I'm good with doing, I just want to know. Yeah, well, that's, I mean.
I don't believe.
It's the pieces come up as they go along.
I believe Mr. Edenbach has some input.
This is nowhere in the building costs. This is trying to get ahead of what we're liable to want to do a year or two years from now. So what we're thinking of as a meeting such as today might have to occur over there. We might want to broadcast, we might want to do all kinds of things. So let's do the system design now so we're ready to execute.
Right, I love being.
We pay for the system design out of our budget, has nothing to do with the building. And there are no funds being expended in the building for equipment for this purpose. The only thing that will happen is that the fiber communications between that building and this building will be built of sufficient robustness that they can connect into that room in the back. All of this equipment we have here is capable of operating remotely into another building. We want to set ourselves up to be able to do it.
And I do recall you saying that you wanted to make sure that building and this building.
I want to make sure it communicates.
They communicated, I remember having that conversation.
And I also want the bill of materials so I know if we have to execute, we can do it relatively quickly. Now, that money will come out of a different war chest, again, nothing to do with the building.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Ed. All right. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. And lastly, yeah, we have the Doylestown Walk dedication of open space C and H. This has been reviewed by the township engineer and he's here if anyone has any questions. We do have the executed copies from Toll Brothers and it's also been reviewed by our township solicitor's office. And I shared with the board the land development approval where those were a condition of approval.
I move that we accept the deed of dedication between Toll and Doylestown Township for Doylestown Walk, sorry.
Yes. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Park and Rec, the DAA. The Park and Recreation Board and staff met with representatives from DAA as DAA made a proposal to the township for adding a shed as well as a scoreboard over at Turk Park at Fields 5 and 6. And in the board's packet, you have the proposed locations of where the shed and the scoreboards would be. They, at our request, and we did follow up, the DAA, and there is Representative Keith Holmes, is here, did contact the neighbors across the street on Turk regarding the scoreboard and they actually brought the height of the scoreboard down a little bit so it would not impact and there were, everyone was fine with the proposal. At the Park and Recreation Board recently, they made a recommendation to the board and are looking for the board's concurrence that we would move forward with these park amenities at Turk Park and DAA will do the installation and maintain those.
I move that we approve or approve on the Doylestown Township Park Board's recommendation to afford DAA the opportunity to build a scoreboard and a shed at Turk's Park, Turk Park, Turks 2, 5 and 6 and shed at Turk 2.
You have a second?
Second.
Just a quick question. Is it clear that, is DAA paying for the scoreboards? Okay, just wanted to be sure. For the shed, the scoreboards? Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We have Dan as a second. Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's all right, we're all getting tired.
Getting through it. Okay, Judy's been waiting all night long. She should stand up and say something, but.
You don't have to.
You don't have to, you're good. The board will recall it, I believe it was your last meeting, you authorized us to apply for a grant. Part of that grant for a baseline water study by the DEP has been prepared. We're ready to submit in a timely fashion. However, there's a requirement for an authorized official resolution by the township and that has been prepared. We are submitting the, sorry, the grant for 200 and, I think it's $48,000 with a grant match of 37,268.70 for a total grant amount request of $211,189.30. And this is our 15% match.
I move that we approve Resolution 2598 authorizing Jennifer Harring and Stephanie Mason to execute the documents necessary for the, to effectuate this agreement. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have a resolution from Birdtown. Heidi is still here and.
What a trooper you are.
So.
I'm happy to ask the board to approve Resolution 2599 recognizing Birdtown. We have been Birdtown since 2011, we're Birdtown again. And Heidi, do you need to speak to this? Would you like to speak to this?
Hi, everyone, thank you again for the approval of this single-use plastic ordinance. That's why I just want to say that first. This is something that we worked on for five years, so really excited to have it completed. And Dan will be happy to work with you with the amending down the road. I'm sorry, I'm a little tired. As far as the lighting resolutions, this is about lighting, just recommending to our residents what they can do to support birds as they migrate through our area. We had last week 1.6 million birds crossing over Bucks County. There's a special app called Birdcast that will let you know how many birds are crossing. your county, so a lot of birds are crossing over Bucks County, even more than down in Cape May. So, whatever we can do to support them, so they don't get confused or disoriented because of the lighting, just recommending residents to reduce their lighting between 11 and 6, and that's what the resolution is asking.
11 and 5.
11 and 5, okay.
Yeah, 6 is good, too.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes, I forget, I made the motion.
We have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Do any, can I just ask, do any of the zoning hearing board applications require attendance by the solicitor?
No, they are all variances and special exceptions for accessory apartments. So, I would recommend a zoning officer that they all be left to the zoning hearing board.
Okay. Can I make that motion? Or did you just do that?
No, I don't think, does it need a motion?
Oh, we don't need a motion?
You're good.
Yeah, yeah. We'll just send it over to zoning. All right, so next is treasurer's report.
Move for the approval of the treasurer's report from May 21, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bills list?
Move for the approval of the bills list from May 21, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment, all items?
Pretty clear. Two very positive. The township engineer, I got stopped trying to drive up Short Road today because they were doing some work. They were doing a great job replacing a drain that's been collapsing, and they told me that for the first time in the 23 years I've lived there, Short Road is going to get paved this year. I'm thrilled, because it's a wreck. Chief, week and a half ago, there was an event in the middle of Doylestown Borough, right there by the courthouse. Your officers were there to assist with the sheriff's department and with the borough's police. They did an exceptional job. So, thank you very much. Pass on my compliments to them, because I was the stuckey to make sure that everybody was secure, and they helped me out. The last item, the Human Resources Commission. I got no problem with doing that. Everybody does it. It's, it's expanding all over the place. You got to be careful about one thing, and this goes back to one of the worlds that I worked in. The genetics clause is a medical clause. And if you really and truly want to get the township in trouble, leave that in there. Because genetics is medical, and that is covered under HIPAA, which is the Federal Health Information Personal Protection Act. And if you get somebody that goes after you there, you will not end up in the municipal court. You will end up in the Eastern District of Pennsylvania, in downtown Philadelphia, in federal court, and that will cost you $1 million. You might want to have the solicitor look at that and see if you can remove that from the HRC.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment?
All right, thank you, everyone.
Move for adjournment.
All right.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. All right.
I almost voted nay.